We stopped the ones at Kentway because nobody would come. You know, the people went to the ones when they were at the old town hall. They went out to the beach, but when people that people just wouldn't go into that as the town hall.
So. Yeah, well, hopefully this, you know, works out. I mean, I think that, you know, when the couple of forums that were held down at the fireman's hall, that was, they seemed to be well attended.
Center of town seems to do better. It all got people from the island, but Kentway, for some reason, I don't know if there's just not a good, comfortable spot there, but people just didn't like it.
Yeah. So you stopped doing this, what, how many years ago?
I think it was a year, a year after we moved into Kentway. So we, we went through that year, we got to the summer break and we often took the summer without the coffee hour and then started up in the fall and we just didn't start it up again.
Now you're going to reverse it. No summer break this year.
That, you know, given the upset and people's concerns, I think no summer break this year. You know, and if people don't show up, then, you know, at least we're trying to, to do the right thing and be available to people and, you know, it may not be a forum that people want to use. And so we, we spend a couple hours, you know, not the end of the world.
No, no, but it's, at least, like you said, you're trying to do something that, reaching out to the citizens and I think that is a great idea.
Yeah, it's important. It's a stressful time for everybody and hopefully we can get through it in a good fashion and get out the other side of it sooner than later. I think everyone would like to stop wearing masks and just be able to get back to some sense of normality. So I think everyone will have nicer yards and gardens.
Yeah, everybody's yard and garden is going to look really good this year. Except my local greenhouse, well, Sephora's, they just about sold out everything.
Yeah.
It's like a month ahead of usually what they do.
When I talked to her, she said things were going well and they weren't sure. I know a lot of places didn't plant as much because they weren't sure if they were going to be able to sell things or not. So they're, you know, everybody's a little bit behind.
Yeah. I don't think, I think this has given a lot of people a little lack of motivation though too. They're just so beaten down by this whole coronavirus.
Yeah. A little disheartened and yeah, I think some people, you know, my mother finds it very hard not to be able to hug all of her friends. And, you know, for other people, it's given them a lot of time with their kids. And, you know, especially I think young families, what's challenging and stressful money wise, it's like, how often do both parents get to spend all day with their kids? You know, a couple of times a year on vacation, so.
Yeah, well, it's been hard. I, my daughter is having her first child in about a month and this will be one of those where nobody can go to the hospital and be present. And so there'll be some distancing going on there.
My friend Molly, who used to live over on Church Street in Byfield, is in England. And so none of her family has been able to do anything beyond Skype with her and the new baby. And she's saying it's really hard to not see her friends, her family, any of that, you know, which was going to be hard anyway because she lives in London now, but, or England. But she was up, you know, in the middle of the night with the baby and lamenting to me because she knew I worked, worked late often. So that's not an easy thing at all.
No, no, it's supposed to be a really joyful time, but when you're isolated, it's, makes it a little different. That's how Claire Dix, her daughter is, is over in England. And they had set up a schedule prior to all of this happening for, you know, continuous visits. And now she can't, she can't go over and see her granddaughter.
Yeah. I mean, I hope that we're moving out of this soon. But it'll depend on how a lot of countries handle it. And, you know, New Zealand did a great job at stifling it. Who can say what's going on? Oh, that?
They have excellent leadership.
Yes. Yeah, they had excellent leadership and they had lead time of seeing how not to do it from, you know, Spain and Italy and us a little bit and, you know, and they're an island, so they have, they have a lot of advantage.
Yeah.
Yeah, my sis is actually getting her PhD in New Zealand right now. And so she was comparing how we were handling things to how they were handling things. You guys are crazy. Yeah, well, it's not, you know, we only have so much power and so much choice in how some of these things happen. You know, federal government is going to do what it's going to do and the state government has to respond to that and we have to respond to both of them.
Right, yep. And they don't, I would just like to see everybody come together and follow the same path and while this whole thing is going on.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely worried about resurgences happening from, from the areas where very little was done to create social distancing and contain it. But I hope that it, it will at least die off in the summer and everyone can get their feet back under them and make good plans for if it comes back again in the fall.
Yeah, that's going to be the key.
Not convinced that won't happen, but we can hope. But I think we, we better well prepare as well, so. How are you finding being on the planning board?
I love it.
Oh, good.
I love it. It's a fantastic group of people, fantastic. There is sharing harmony. Everybody reaches out and helps the other person always.
Oh, good. That's fantastic. It's a, it's, there's a lot of legal groundwork in the planning board and it, it can be tough to get it all under your belt.
Well, yeah, the first few meetings, it was an eye opener. But after, you know, years' time, I feel a lot more comfortable. And the guidance I've had from the other board members has been, well, I just feel like I stepped back into school and I have great teachers.
That's good to hear. I like, the planning board seems to get on very well. The only big issue that I experienced is the golf center, which we're
Yeah.
struggling and struggling to help him get through and he, he doesn't see it. It's very challenging.
I don't see that as, his contractor has done him any favors.
No, he really, his contractor's attitude has not helped anyone. And the fact that he wouldn't bring on more people and get the work done in a timely fashion, I mean, it must be just crippling Eric.
Yeah. I mean, Eric's not a bad guy. He's, he's a really nice guy, I can see. I'd like to see it get done and be open. I think it will be good for the community. Right, right now it would be great because you could, it would be a place to go that would have social distancing and give people something to do. And ice.
Oh, go ahead.
And ice cream.
Yes, and ice cream. I mean, I so wish that, you know, last spring, in February, when we met with them, we said, you know, your first priority is to stabilize this area, your second priority is that, and then get the landing area done. And, you know, if, if at this point you had the landing area done, we might be able to, you know, give him a temporary occupancy permit so that people could be doing that. But, you know, he chose to focus on other things and and now he's just getting to where, you know, we wanted him to be working last spring.
Wow.
So.
A little behind.
Yeah. But yeah, it'll be really nice when that is open and running and complete.
Oh, you're frozen.
Oh. I just got a text, so I have to, wanted to check. It's Tracy wondering if she should just cut off the meeting at 10:00. And I'm going to tell her, well, why don't you check in with me at 10:00? Because I don't want someone cut off in the middle of the 10:00, if there's anyone here, so.
Well, Steve Manchin's here.
Hi Damon, hi Tracy. Just do the inevitable. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. I love it when people ask that question, so why should I be an exception? Leslie, can I jump in and maybe we can pass the baton if need be?
Yeah, sure.
Back and forth, but I had a couple of issues I wanted to bring up. One of which I did send to the selectmen as well as to Damon in advance of this Zoom meeting, specifically voicing concerns about having a town meeting scheduled in mid-June. The ongoing possibilities of COVID, COVID resurgence. I can well imagine it'd be really useful to see who shows up at town meeting so we can track them and see what their health is after town meeting, you know, 14 days later and that sort of thing, or maybe even less than 14 days later. But I just see a town meeting as being a likely spot to create a big spreading zone. My understanding, and Damon has seen this, so, and certainly he may want to talk about it when I'm done with this little spiel about how, my understanding is that the governor's executive order gives the towns the ability to hold town meetings. However, it doesn't say you have to do it. And I believe there's a provision where you could go for budgets that are like 1/12 of what you spent last year pending having the annual town meeting when things have truly calmed down with the threat of COVID spread. So inasmuch as there are upcoming selectmen's meetings, I was urging there be consideration of moving the town meeting back further in the calendar. And again, a lot of it has to do with health, well, health concerns and how people might well stay away because of those health concerns. I may be one of them, in which case to getting an even less representative attendance for the body.
I mean, that was, at the district communication meeting where we talk about the Triton budget, one of my concerns, which I expressed at Salisbury and Rally, was about the fact that we might have a, you know, extremely underrepresented meeting. And the selectmen who were present at those meetings said, well, we just have to get the budget through and we're not trying to do anything in our town. And so they're trying to push forward with it. I think we, as a board, will be reassessing as we get closer. If the infection rate hasn't dropped off, I, I don't think anyone on the board is going to willingly say, well, let's, let's risk it just so we don't have to do a 1/12 budget. If it looks like we endanger people, I'm fairly confident that we would delay again. So I know some people are very unhappy with the delays, but I, I'm not comfortable putting people's lives at risk just because it, it's easier budgetarily. Like, I just don't think it makes sense. None of the bylaws we're going to correct are that pressing, you know.
Right.
So I'm, that's my position is that if, if we can't do it safely, we will not do it.
Right. And certainly that's why I asked you all to consider this and certainly you can bring it back to the selectmen, though it's not clearly whether it could be talked about on June 2nd or they have to wait till June 9th to have that discussion. Those are next in selectmen meetings that are only posted.
Yeah, I think, I think we can talk about it because it would fall under old business. And I can bring it up as meeting update because, because we're talking about it at the coffee hour and I have to update everyone what I, what was said and heard, so. But I don't know if I can actually start a discussion unless it's on the agenda. So I will, I can text JR and, and clarify.
Well, thank you.
You can revise the agenda. You can bring it up to date. But yes, Steve, I think, you know, your point is well taken. There, people are, they're going out, but they're not going to places where they feel that they're going to be crowded in with other people at this point in time, unless you're down at the Jersey Shore. You know, even like, you know, keeping the distance when you go and do your food shopping and things of that nature. So, and they have to work hard. But in an auditorium that's closed in and sitting on even clothed seats that can hold the virus for a longer period of time and the amount of people that show no symptoms whatsoever, making sure that everybody wears a mask, I don't know if you can even like implement taking temperatures before people enter the building, but that would be maybe something that could be taken into consideration.
I can talk to Doug and see if that, I think we have enough temperature readers that that is probably feasible, given the low number of people who are likely to attend the town meeting.
Right. I don't know what the seating capacity is in the auditorium at Triton, but you're going to have, you know, the logistics is going to have to get figured out as far as distancing and how many people can actually attend the meeting. You know, you're going to have to figure out what the limit is.
One of the many confounding things I put into the email to the selectmen and to Damon, and I believe I CC'd Tracy on the one I sent to the selectmen, is to say, well gee, what happens if you get a high temperature reading? When you deny entrance to the town?
Open the door, yeah.
You know, what does that mean, kind of thing? Which, I mean, that could happen no matter when you hold a town meeting, whether it be June, July, August, September. But it's an interesting.
Yeah, is that a violation of people's rights at that point? And it's, it's definitely, these are not the sorts of things I thought I'd be trying to figure out as a selectman.
Right, and again.
Very different.
You know, and in raising the issue, it could be construed as one of these, you know, gotcha questions. I really loathe gotcha questions, but I'm really not trying to play gotcha in raising that particular aspect of, what are we going to do?
Yep. Well, I know, I know that private businesses have done just that. They'll turn people away at the door if they have a temperature. I don't know that, I don't know what right we actually have as a municipality in respect to that. One of those questions where we'd have to consult, A, the order of the governor, which I don't recall mentioning anything about that, because I think, yeah, I'd have to look more closely at the language around the town meeting because, you know, at present, we're still gathering of less than 10, 10 or less.
Right.
So we can hold the town meeting, which has to be 40 plus to be, to meet our quorum. And so how, I'll have to look much more closely at what the actual structure of that is because, you know, the capacity will be affected by groups who come in together. You know, a family group doesn't have, we don't have to spread them all out six feet. We can keep them together. And so what is our, you know, do we do our capacity via groups or by individuals? And, you know, there are a lot of logistics that will have to come.
You got my cat's attention, Leslie. The, and I don't know what Chief Riley's role is deciding it. Is he, is he like one of three votes when the, what I call the troika gets together? Or certainly I can imagine he's going to lend advice, but who, who's the ultimate decision maker? I imagine it's the selectmen ultimately that set the dates, but you're going to get advice from the chief as well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are constantly getting input from the chief and the state and Deb, who's the health agent. And so we'll essentially, you know, they've, they've weighed in on holding it and think, you know, with the extra space they have in the heat capacity of Triton, that it is plausible to do it safely. But again, if we have a massive outbreak in the next couple of weeks, either here or in any surrounding area, then I don't imagine we'd want to proceed at that time. Because I just don't, you know, like I said, nothing on the agenda at meeting is so important that you want to put anyone's life at risk.
I would agree. And again, that's why I wasn't kidding when I said it would be useful to keep track of who attends the town meeting eventually since that could be a wonderful database. I, it would be an unfortunate thing if it's a wonderful database, but we're glad we have if we need to have it.
Yeah, the contact tracing is definitely something that the governor has, I think, gotten a good handle on. So, you know, we will have a record of who's at town meeting, because we always do. But hopefully we won't need to use it for those purposes.
Right. A two for one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and related to all that, and I realize it's too late for that too, I suspect, is that given the likely paucity of attendance in the June annual town meeting, I think it's unfortunate that we have had to restrict voting hours for actual ballots for the town election. And some of the context for that is that though, as been noted at previous selectmen's meetings, a number of people asked to get mail-in ballots. I think something was over 1,000 and that would be a really good number. But to me, the proof is in the pudding about how many of those ballots were returned. Because that's the other part, that's the other part of the, the voting. And of course, even when you return a ballot, if you haven't filled it out correctly, it could be not allowed for whatever reason. So, I mean, this part of me that is going through a mental exercise, Damon, I'm thinking, well gee, let's say I didn't fill it out correctly or it didn't get to the, wasn't delivered or whatever. You know, maybe, maybe I want to go to Morgan Ave and file a provisional ballot if need be, in case something is found faulty with the one I submitted via the mail. And again, this sounds a little bit along the lines of gotcha kind of thing, but, you know, I'm concerned that people may not fill out their returned ballots correctly and then they'll be discarded as well. So.
Yeah, I mean.
What if things?
It is one of the, I was strongly opposed to shifting the hours initially. Just because it's, my gut feeling is you want the polls open for as long as possible. You want to make it as easy as possible for everyone to vote. Which is part of why I like the idea of the mail-in ballots, because I feel like it's better access. And I think, you know, I think when you register to vote, you should be able to choose to vote, you know, electronically if you want, by mail if you want, or in person if you want. And always you have the option to do the provisional ballot in person. But given the normal turnout for our municipal elections and the interest generated, I felt like, you know, even if people, well, you know, if people filled out a ballot incorrectly and don't try to get to the polls, there's nothing, you know, that we can do at this point. And that's always true, you know. I have a friend who's still a resident but lives in London. You know, she, when she mails in her ballot, it's wrong, it's wrong, and she's never going to know about it. Which is weird to me that they don't let you know. But, but I think, given that, at this point, at the last time I checked in with Leslie, 1,411 people had gotten, submitted for requested mail-in ballot. And that's more people than voted in the last municipal election. So I'm very hopeful that people will follow through and actually send them back in. So have done it right and will get at least, well, not a, you know, perfect representation of the town. Will have significant input or input at the level that we normally have at the very least.
Might be an interesting retrospective down the road, not only for Newbury, but for other towns. You know, a retrospective being done in part where people like to research this kind of topic. But certainly look at our own town and see how it worked out. Leslie, I'll be quiet for a while if you'd like to take the lead.
I just want to go on about the ballot. And I, it is interesting that if you do fill it out incorrectly, that nobody ever knows one way or the other if your vote was casted. Do, can they give you a number at least on how many were returned and how many were filled out incorrectly, just to?
Yes, I think that, I can double check, but my understanding is that they do keep track of that. So they, because they read each one, you know, through the machine. And then if it doesn't file properly, that gets listed as well. So you have the total number of ballots cast, yeah, ballots returned, and then there's a separate number if there was a mistake. In the last election, I don't think there were any. But it's, it is broken out, so, you know, if we had something like 50% filled in wrong, we would know it. So that's definitely data that we can, we will have.
It was a, I'll just jump backwards. It was a very good forum the other night with the candidates for selectmen.
Yeah, Richard did a very nice job in moderating it and everyone stayed on time. And I thought it was a pretty good, I don't know how many people ended up tuning into it or, and I could check and see how many people have been.
I think it was somewhere around between 40 and 50.
So that's a sizable number. I was, I kept on wanting to click over to the participant list and scroll through it, but I decided I should just pay attention.
No, and it was, it was, because I scroll, I would, I was scrolling through to see who was in attendance and it was interesting to see that were people that you normally haven't seen at any of the, the regular Board of Selectmen meetings on Zoom, so I think it was well attended. The forum on Thursday night wasn't as well attended, but Mr. Lodge did do a very good job, again, moderating that.
Yeah. As nervous as we were before the meeting.
It, it would have been a shame not to have had something at least, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's real, to me, it's really strange not to be going around door to door and talking to people right now, but I just don't think it's, you know, if I was a disease vector, I don't think I'd ever be able to forgive myself, so.
Yeah.
Something you can do right now.
And besides, you could go door to door and people might not even recognize you with a mask on.
Yes, I mean, I've made jokes a bunch of times about how it's really strange to be putting a mask on before you go into the bank or a store. That, you know, reminds me of all the heist movies that you see and things like that. on before you go into the bank or a store. That, you know, reminds me of all the heist movies that you see and things like that.
I know it. Well, well, we got to do what we got to do. But I, yeah, it, it is too bad that people, they do have questions.
Yeah.
And they do, I think, appreciate face-to-face.
Well, I think it, it's really how you get a sense of what people care about and what's important to them and, you know, it's, I think it's the, you know, the best way to do the communication. It's hard to, you know, you can never reach everyone. But um, it makes me, you know, I wonder how people in the federal government or the state level where you, you know, we've got seven thousand residents just about that we're serving, but I can't imagine trying to serve, you know, a whole state's worth and maintain any sense of what people are feeling like and what their needs are in the, in the personal way that you can in a small town.
If we go forward and do have the town meeting in June, um, it will be broadcast live, but will people be able to participate through Zoom on that? I mean, not that they'll have a voice, but, well, they could have a voice where uh, it, it can't go by, you know, a roll call or a, but you know, you could go with the loudest yea or nay.
Um.
I know that at your meeting, I think they had a um, cutoff for like ninety people that would have been able to attend the forum the other night.
Yeah, we would have to talk to Zoom to make sure that we could host more than ninety people. And I don't know how voting would be done at that point as far as, you know, when we are, you know, when people go to the meetings, usually they check in via um,
Like.
You know, their street address. And so I don't know how we would do the registration of voters and all that, so I'm just making another couple of little distractions. Um, so that's in, I, yeah, I don't know how we would have them vote or not vote. And again, whether or not we have a legal ability to either grant or deny that vote, I'm not sure. That's a question for, that I'll have to ask town council to clarify.
You know, watching the federal government, they seem to be able to have some people in the room and some people, uh, and they're able to uh, do their votes remotely.
Hmm. Okay, I know that the, either the Senate or the House just vote remotely.
The Senate.
Oh.
Of course, they're, they're on break, so.
Um.
Be back Monday. Yeah, Monday.
Yeah. Tracy just texted me that there's no provisions for a Zoom meeting at present.
Okay.
Town meeting.
That would definitely be a tough one to verify who's on, who's a citizen and all that other good stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, citizen of the town of Newbury, that is.
Yeah, just uh, trying to think of a solution to generate more interest and get those people that they can at least, even if they don't, couldn't have a say, if they were muted, if, at least they could hear the information uh, live. Um, but it'll be on channel nine, I suppose anyway, so.
Yeah, it should be up and live if people are, are wanting to watch. So, that much, oh, go ahead, Steve.
I was gonna say, if the meeting occurs at Triton, does that mean that it may be on channel eight rather than channel nine? Just thinking out loud about uh, how it's gonna be. You don't have to know the answer to that right now, Damon, but it might be something to get clarified.
I can ask about it at the next meeting and I'm sure that uh, I'm sure I'll have an answer about that. Because yes, I don't know, I know what we did to set up broadcasting from Triton, but I don't know if that's channel-specific. I don't imagine it is, but I could, I could easily not know the text well enough to be right. So. Good question.
Hey, we're working it. We're trying to work it for you, Damon.
I appreciate it.
If I may, I realize only two people are on right now, uh, just Leslie and I, but I think the idea of having these meetings is a good one. Uh, clearly, it's a commitment on the part of the selectmen's time to do it. And you never know how many people are going to show up, but, especially in the summertime, but I think it's a good thing to try and do. So.
Yeah. I mean, I, I really enjoyed them when we first started the coffee hours uh, back at the beginning of my tenure. Um, and so I'd like to bring them back in some fashion, no matter what happened with the, the coronavirus and our social distancing and.
Right.
My cat always thinks we should be involved in every meeting I have.
Oh, I bring my cat into view, but she's sleeping. I don't want to wake her up, even though she's right next to me.
Yes, I'm just glad the dogs haven't all decided that there's a vicious and terrible predator outside.
Hey, um, can I bring up something uh, different, just as a thought, which has to do with budget? And it may surprise you that uh, what I was going to mention was the uh, I think there's a line item in the warrant to put about a hundred thousand dollars into an account to cover some of our outstanding pension liabilities.
Yep.
And I think I recall Tracy saying it was on, it's on the order of seven million dollars that quote, you know, quote unfunded or something like that. And it occurred to me that um, given how our budget increase, a proposed budget increase is relatively small this year. It's certainly under two percent, whatever the number is. It occurred to me, this may point to a, I'll say lost opportunity, but that's too strong a word, but a lost opportunity to try and start to fill up that pension liability fund. I mean, a hundred thousand a year with a seven million dollar liability, well, you can do the math and it's going to take seventy years. And this may have been a year to have put more money into that, given where we were with our overall budget. So maybe that's something to think about for next year, but I thought I'd uh, let you know that I tried to listen to many issues and not just one or two.
I'm glad to hear it. I, I think you uh, you generally pay attention. You don't always speak up about everything, but I've, we've had, you know, our, our talks over at Mad Martha's here. I think you're watching the whole, whole ball, not just little pieces of it.
So that's something just to offer up.
Yeah, I mean, it's um, the way we looked at that in the fiscal plan was that we wanted to get essentially our capital management program with our building needs as, get that focus till, you know, structured first. So we had those expenses and could project them forward before really trying to aggressively tackle the pension liability. Um, but it's not a bad point that, given we did not uh, use the prop two and a half to its fullest extent, maybe we, we should have been doing a little bit more with this one right now. I think it's always a tough call to to be doing the, the forward projection. And um, you know, with, with the other expenses that we have, I think we never want to do too much at one time because we just don't want to burden everyone with that sort of expense.
Yeah, I think there may be, you know, an underlying issue about, you know, who knows what, when kind of thing, and that um, though I do try and follow things, uh, save a hundred thousand dollars for pension liabilities first became known to me when I heard the selectmen discussing that with the FinFUND. And it's difficult to try and, you know, send in a suggestion, you know, two weeks or a month ahead of time to the selectman urging that they consider such a thing because we don't see um, as much as we might like to see at the right time. And indeed, the selectman may not see it all either as the budget's being assembled and then you get to see it uh, without a lot of lead time. So it's, you know, certainly not a direct criticism of the board and anyone on it, but just trying to point out there may be a structural problem in terms of getting citizen input at the right time so that uh, it doesn't appear that we're coming at you with pitchforks and that sort of thing.
But we do get that feeling every once in a while. Um, with the budget, we tried to post a draft budget to the website a month before we discuss it at the meeting. I don't think that happened this year. Um, but it is, that's the goal, is to have it up for a month so that we have enough time to digest it. If we have questions, we can go talk to the department head, we can talk to Tracy, you know, because it is, it's a lot to digest. And if you really want to dive into something, it can take a, a couple of weeks to really get to the bottom of what's going on somewhere. So it is something we, we want to have happen for sure.
Right. Yeah, I didn't realize that uh, in a typical year, the goal is to have it available on the website ahead of time. And that's what's been learned for me.
Yeah, I think it has been up in the past two years, but I'd have to double-check with Susan about it. So, although Tracy may have just don't know that's a different message. I don't know if she's still paying attention right now.
Damon, this recording will probably be available on the YouTube channel, much like the candidate's forum, I'm guessing, or maybe.
That was my belief. I think that's why we're recording it. So. Um, unless everyone objected. But, no, that's not from Tracy either. So I was, whenever you ask a question and there's an immediate response from my, me getting a text, I think it's going to be her.
Back to you, Leslie.
I think I'm running out of questions. I'd like to, I uh, like to get this election taken care of. So I've, and I, I just want to see the town to be able to move forward again. I just feel like we're kind of stuck in a time warp here.
Yeah, I feel like everyone is, you know, I think that's, that's true economically, politically, you know, we're all sort of mired in it. Um, so I, it's a weird, you know, as with the town meeting and the, I think the same is true with the election. It's a very weird election. It'll be really nice. It's always nice when they're over. Um, because then you get, you know what's coming forward and you get to work with it, so.
Well, I have to say that the um, people that the planning board are working with as far as like trying to move their projects forward have been very accommodating as far as continuances are concerned. And it's, it's been very helpful because it's hard to, to have a, a public hearing and uh, basically not, you have the public hearing, but it's almost like you can't get everybody to participate in it um, in the same way, whether they show up for a Zoom meeting or not. But um, I'd like to see those start back up again. And we've, we've, are considering to play catch-up with some of the projects that are on the table, um, is having a weekly meeting. Just so we don't get bogged down or get into the wee hours of the, of the night and.
Yeah, you don't want to be making complicated uh, zoning decisions at eleven o'clock at night after a long day in the sun.
Right.
It's just.
When you're fighting just to keep your eyes open after a long day.
Speaking of getting bogged down or having the planning board get bogged down, uh, another mudhole I'd like to put out there is the infamous master plan, which there's been no meetings and no discussion for quite a long time. And in some respects, I think that affects Martha Taylor even more than it does the planning board. Sometimes I think of Martha as being the uh, sixth member of the planning board in the sixth selectment as well, given all that seems to go to her end of the table.
Oh, there's a lot on her plate.
And arguably, from where I sit, it seems like there may even be too much, but.
Very oblogeing.
The uh, but the master plan is one of those things that's hanging out there. And that affects some of the decisions the town is, not decisions, well, affects some of the things that are undiscussed by the town as a whole. Not that the master plan is a binding document, it surely isn't that. But it does become a place where um, you can put stuff on the table and then people can look at it and, you know, provide comment as a, as a town back to the planning of board.
I think it, it serves as a reference point for starting of discussion, you know? It lays out, should we, you know, if we're talking about roads, what we want to do with roads, we have a baseline for the start there, you know? As we look at forty B, you know, that informed our housing plan for the town and that informed, you know? So all of those things, I think, have a, a genesis, you know, since we can't reach everyone with every question, the master plan serves as a starting point for where we think the town is about a question and then we can explore from there. So, you know, it's a really useful document. I uh, I know Chuck was serving on it and I, like I said, I, it has fallen off of my radar, so I can find out what's going on with it.
Yeah, I know I've uh, sent something to Martha previously and asked her to send it on to the chair, Peter. And Martha was like, yeah, it's on our list, or my list, meaning her list of things to do. So, yeah, I'm not faulting, but rather I just want to keep it in front of the selectmen and the planning board since Leslie's here today.
I've asked about it myself because being a, a member of the master plan board, um, I've, it's, you know, I've been on the bo, uh, planning board for a year now and there has been actually really no discussion whatsoever.
Now, when you became a, when you got yourself sworn in, did, I said, was it Rachel was?
Yes.
Did she get you a copy of the master plan or did you already have one? Have you?
I think it's in my, it was in my, you know, uh, packet that I received right at the very beginning.
Okay.
But I don't think that, if I'm correct, it's been a number of years since there's been actually any work done on it.
Yeah, the update. Um, it's, I think due, so.
It's, I think it's overdue.
Yeah.
By.
Reviewed every five years.
Yep.
Yeah, I think when we started on it a while back, it was more than ten years um, old. And, but that is still the extent of the existing master plan. But the update, I don't think is, or the new one hasn't been worked on in if, close to two years, maybe even a tad more than two years, when round numbers, two years. And it'd be nice to get it rolling again. First of all, I have to, you'll read it and see what's in the draft master plan at the moment.
Yeah. I think uh, it certainly would do, if we can get it, get it going again, it certainly will serve us well, so.
Right. Though I recall one time, uh, another community, uh, one person from the elected officials, again, this isn't Newbury, was saying in response to some comments that were coming from the Florida meeting, well, it's in the master plan, it's in the master plan. And some of us said back, said, yeah, but that's not a definite, a determinative document. It's for planning purposes. You don't have to do, it's in the master plan.
Yeah, we're not bound by law to do it. Yeah, we're not bound by law to do it, it's just dirt.
And like if it gets going again, when people are sworn in, that might be one of the things to remind everyone. You're not writing a binding document for the town.
Yeah. It's certainly not a binding document, it's a, almost like a poll compilation, more than anything else. Although some politicians do find the polls to be binding documents. Not always the case, so. It is a, we shall see. I don't know, I don't know why it stopped, and so I can't give you much information on that one.
I guess at least if it comes up to be reviewed as it stands right now, that would be a helpful way to get restarted. Because time has gone by, I'm sure a lot of people have no recollection of what is actually in the master plan.
Yep.
Yeah, I certainly have little recollection of many details, so, which means I suppose I could try and find an electronic copy of the draft that hasn't gone into cyberspace on me.
Lost in cyberspace, yeah. I had a physical copy that I had a lot of tabs in because I took lots of notes on it. But I haven't seen my copy in a little while either, so.
Cut the cat box. A bad joke.
I thought you'd seen, I have over there a little cat tree with a box, and I thought you'd just seen that in the background. So, no, I don't think, I've yet to use any of my town documents for kitty litters, so.
They do pile up quickly.
Oh my God. I always feel bad when I go into Martha's office.
Oh my God.
Makes me feel better, but the file cabinet's full of stuff I have. Because, yeah, she's just, as you said, a little overworked and I can't imagine she's not overwhelmed.
Well, she's, she's dedicated to a fault.
Yes. Committed, committed to the town in a solid way, so.
Oh.
Very lucky to have her.
Damon, anything you want to ask we two that are on the line, so you can sound the citizenry?
It is, uh, to my mind, it's your guys' opportunity to, to reach out and say whatever you want to me. I mean, as far as I'm, I'm concerned out on the island about how everybody's holding up. Because I have not been out there very much this year. I know there've been, you know, I get the reports from the chief about the parking and, you know, how that's all going, but, you know, I don't, again, not going door to door and talking to people. I miss Mad Martha's, but you know, that's the, I haven't been out much, so I don't know what's going on, how people are feeling.
Yeah, I know. I miss the beachcombe on a Sunday afternoon listening to live music.
Well, I think a lot of people are missing coming out to Plum Island because the parking is still limited, even though the private lots have opened up. But, you know, they're pretty expensive. The other thing I've noticed though, but I haven't walked beyond Mad Martha's, along Northern Boulevard, that is, is that a number of the cottages that I know have historically done a lot of summer rentals or weekly rentals, a number of them were filling up these past couple of weeks, and that gets back to the governor's decision to try and minimize, you know, short-term rentals and how we go about enforcing it. I know that one of my near neighbors wrote to the chief a while back, more than a month ago. And again, no criticism intended, but what John heard back from the chief when he asked about how are we dealing with rentals, the chief, I believe I've got this correct, when he, the chief wrote back saying it's kind of like the honor system.
Yeah.
That may be one of those underlying things because, you know, if I see a cottage full of cars, maybe without a state plate to do it, well, still, well, what can the town do about that? Certainly, I'm not happy to have a lot of people coming in from all over. Same kind of issue with, you know, spreading the virus and that sort of thing.
Well, it's going to be difficult because if you come in from another state, they want you to quarantine for 14 days before you can actually get out and have your vacation. And some people are only coming for a week, so.
Yeah, not the, most people can't get away from home for, for the two weeks that it takes. I had a friend who just went up to Maine because he works up there, but they're very strict. So he'll get up there and he'll spend two weeks in a room before he can start working. The way it goes. It's a, it's a strange, strange thing. It certainly doesn't work for the Airbnb, but as far as the enforcement, we don't have any legal means right now to, you know, we can't lock them up and send them back where they came from. We certainly could reprimand the renter. But it's a, you know, the town hasn't moved forward with any sort of registration of Airbnbs. It was one of the things that the state was going to, you know, something that I thought we should do. Because A, I think it should provide a little revenue to the town. And B, because it's, it's just good to know what's going on, you know? But it was one of those things where I proposed it and the state was going to do something. And we would then have to respond to the state, so we decided to wait, and the state has not come up with a full framework.
The guidelines they put out yesterday were pretty interesting. The actually, the lieutenant governor went through the guidelines of lodging for the upcoming months and that there has to be, they're going to, they're going to have to have a certain amount of time between when the original renter leaves and then they have to come in and do a deep cleaning again and disinfect everything, top to top. Families can go to like a single dwelling, like cottages at the beach. And then they talked about how they're going to do motels, hotels and things of that nature. It was pretty in-depth. But it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of additional work for the landlord to, to keep this thing rolling. They're going to, the revenue that they're going to lose is how they pay their taxes.
Yeah, it is a, yeah, I was not necessarily referring to a bylaw for how we deal with it during Corona, but one for a long-term, you know, how does the town want to handle it zoning-wise? Because I think we have nothing on the books about it. So technically, anyone can do Airbnb outside of the pandemic sort of any way they want. And the state was going to write something, but it either got bogged down in committee or lost somewhere, so. It may be something that the planning board wants to visit again as far as, do we want to have our own bylaw before the state has something out? Just that we know, you know, do they register like we do our business licenses? Where it's a voluntary registration, but you submit it and then we have it on record and it's, uh, it's something that we can look at in the future.
Yeah, they should have a license because it's a business and they make an income.
Yeah.
As we approach 10 o'clock, Damon, going to do two quick peeves, one of which actually has a pet angle on it and something like that, which gets to how as a resident on Plum Island, I really shake my head mightily when I see people coming down the turnpike with their dogs and, not a Newbury sticker, but they go into the private lots with their dog. And then all too often, you know, often might be one time, but certainly more than one time, you're leaving dog waste on the beach. And the current bylaw allows dogs on the beach before 8:30 and after 4:30. And, you know, in the summertime, that doesn't necessarily work very well. Sometimes people are coming with their pets to a rental on the island as well. And it's just one of those housekeeping things that I would love to see the Board of Health regulation get turned into a bylaw down the road to at least minimize some of the dogs on the beach issue during the summertime. And I realize it's a very contentious issue and that sort of thing, but it's certainly something I would like to keep on your back burner, so to speak.
Yeah.
And the other thing, which is somewhat related to all that, I mean, my understanding is that some of the issues pertaining to trash cans and that sort of thing for the summer season, like last time I thought I heard that it's not going to happen this year because of, you know, Board of Health considerations about what it means to have trash cans provided by the town on the beach. But I find myself still thinking that by God, you've got, you know, several good-sized parking lots, three on Northern Boulevard, excuse me, on the Plum Island Boulevard and blue down at the end of Southern Boulevard.
Yep.
They could provide trash containers, and it might be painful for them to have to do it, but that could be part of their business license. Whether that falls into the purview of the planning board as well as the selectmen, I don't know. But it doesn't seem to me that the town grants business licenses for parking, that the owner should have a free ride when it comes to trash. And I'm, I'm not going to discuss it, but of course, that gets into bathrooms too. But I'd rather focus on the trash issue.
That is one of the things that I actually pushed for when we first started, when the Plum Island, I forget what the committee was called, but when that committee first reported, one of the things I pushed for was to require in a license of, for a parking area, anything more than 10 spots have potentially at least trash and potentially have their own bathrooms. But that was not very well received by, by the rest of the board at that time. So I did hear from Tracy that you, the Board of Health has, I think it was, it looks like we will be putting out trash in porta-potties, yeah, once the Board of Health clears it, so. It's a.
Right, I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought I read or heard something where the Board of Health was concerned about porta-potties and how often one would have to do a cleaning of them.
Yeah.
If we're going to deep clean a cottage when people move out, I can only imagine the need to do a deep cleaning on the porta-potties more often. And again, I'm trying not to get into the issue of bathrooms in general, but just to say, this is, you know, a concern which I could imagine. Last I heard, I thought the Board of Health was saying, thinking the answer might be no to porta-potties because of the cleaning issues. But I have been wrong more than once in my life.
It happens to all of us. They've, I think, until the transmission of COVID is reduced enough, we will not be putting out porta-potties. But the plan is when essentially the state has done enough testing that they can say that transmission is down enough to have public spaces open. Not that you, porta-potties are public space, but you know what I'm saying. You know, it will follow the state's guidance on that as far as when is it safe to have that sort of high-traffic intimate space open? And we may, you know, have to do one of those things where you have the six-foot line with a sanitation, sanitation station. So you sanitize before you go in and you sanitize when you come out. And, you know, do the whole, you walk in this way, you walk out that way. Because, you know, it's, it's going to change until we either, you know, have a, what they were first saying, which is the 70% you know, of people have been infected, then that will slow down transmission because most people be, have antibodies or we have a vaccine. I think, you know, how we handle public spaces is, is going to be a little more challenging.
For sure.
Well, with that, I'll be quiet, so in case we want to sign off, but I'm listening if we don't.
Well, I think, you know, unless you guys have more things that you're dying to tell me or you, you know, would like to tell me, then I might go back and do some more reading because I'm always behind on it. But I really appreciate you guys taking the time to log in and, and spend part of your morning with me.
And, yeah, thanks for doing this. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I hope.
Hopefully it builds momentum as time goes on.
Yeah, tell your friends and neighbors, the ones you can, you know, shout at from six feet away.
Get my bullhorn out.
Yeah, thank you for doing it. Thanks, excuse me, thanks to Tracy too, since she's been on the, you know, doing something behind the scenes, so thanks to her as well.
Yep. Okay, thank you. You all have a good Saturday now.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.